There is not crime, there is crime. We live in a city, we're not on an island. Some people are good, some people are bad. It's not just the role of police, it's the role of you and I. If you see something, report something. Have a neighborhood, a robust neighborhood watch. We have to work together, we have to support, in my mind, we have to support our police. What that includes adequate funding for equipment, for personnel. When you talk about UAV unmanned aerial vehicles versus drone, that might be an extra tool for our police department to help make us safe. So at the end of the day, we need to continue to feel safe and we need to continue to support our police department.
Any one-minute responses or additions? All right, let's go to our next question, and I'm going to turn this, Mr. Diggs, you're going to go first. As most of you know, the 1918 homelessness census has been completed. There are a record number of homeless people, we've addressed it.
Twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen, I'm sorry. As you can see, I really want to harken back to the past.
Boss, it does take a long time to get those numbers back.
It does. Well, and I think the zinc is helping me. So, the census has been completed, there is a record number of homeless folks now living on our streets, including a record number of homeless veterans. We know that there's probably more homeless veterans living on the streets of Los Angeles than anywhere else in the United States. As I understand the statistic, there is one out of every eight homeless persons in America is now in Southern California. It's quite extraordinary. So tell us how you think that Culver City, as you said, ought to be dealing with these questions. Mr. Diggs.
As a veteran, I take that to heart. For our city, it's nice being kind, but we need to be compassionate. We have the numbers, they're large numbers, they're staggering numbers. The state, the county, has come up with taxes to assist in reducing or helping our homeless. There are many, many private organizations that are doing fantastic work. I don't know about you, but it just seems like, and I'm digressing, once an expo terminus came, it seemed like there were more homeless. I might be wrong, but it just seems that way. To the extent our city can identify the homeless, get them in a program, or transition them into a place where they can get help, I believe that's positive. The police department, I believe they have a mental health specialist that goes around with patrol officers. That is fantastic. I think that's funded in part by a grant. If that money ever dries up, we need to find the money to continue that.
Thank you. Mr. Lee.
I think the duty to do something about homelessness is something that should be shared at the state level, the county level, and every municipality. I remarked to some people tonight that I've been to meetings at Veterans Auditorium or Veterans Park many times and ran into houseless individuals who were looking for the homeless services that used to be available at the Armory there. I think it's a shame that the homeless services in Los Angeles County are concentrated either in Santa Monica and Venice, or in downtown LA, with some good services also available in the Long Beach area. I think it would be fantastic if we had not only services that we contract out to, like, I think St. John's is who we use here in Culver City, but if we had a real dedicated homelessness facility here, because a number of the people who are homeless in Culver City are families. The Culver City School Board has been more proactive about taking track of the homeless families that live in Culver City, and they've had a more accurate count of people who are already part of this community who are being pushed out on the streets. One of the callous things that often happens when we try to address homelessness is that we try to give people services or take them to a location which separates them from their community. I think if Culver City wants to do something very proactive about homelessness, one, we need to find funding, two, we need to find a facility, and three, we need to find a way to keep individuals or homeless families in the community that they have a connection to. As a veteran, this is very important to me as well.
Mr. Vera.
I think homelessness is an issue, it's a regional issue. We can't do, we can't do it by ourselves. We really need to reach out, and it is all about funding, funding, funding. We need the money, we need locations. You know, as member of the Upper Bound House Board of Directors, it's all about rapidly housing. We have an excellent program in Culver City, and I'm also a huge supporter of Backpack for Kids program. But with Upper Bound, we take families who are homeless, put them into the facility, we get them job skills, we'll text them to ChrisWiz, get resumes if they have problems with paperwork, whether it's driver's license or immigration, whatever it is, we help them to re-acclimate back into society, get them a job, get them where they can get back into their own house and support their family through the community. I know it is all about funding, but we have to be realistic also. We can't force somebody off the street into a program. We can't say, "We're going to take you and we're going to get you into a drug program, we're going to take you and put you into housing." Some of them, they're comfortable for whatever reason out on the street, that's what they know, and we need to provide shelter, we need to provide someplace where they can go and feel comfortable. You know, in talking to somebody, a homeless guy who lives at 7-Eleven across the street from the store, I stopped and talked to him, and all they really want is, or at least him in particular, personal contact. So if people walk by and they ignore me, they look past me because they think I want money, he goes, "You actually stop and look in my eyes and ask me how I'm doing." Some of them just want to be felt, they want to feel like they're needed, like they're part of society. So I think you, as a group, really need to start focusing on that, and looking at them, and maybe interacting with them, and learning about who they really are.
Mr. Fish.
There was an article in the LA Times about a month ago, an op-ed piece called "Homeless City." It took the homeless, the 57,000 people in LA County experiencing homelessness, and contextualized them as a city, and it's a pretty chilling article to read. It's, you know, one in 10 of our homeless are people experiencing homelessness in LA County are veterans, I think, I think one in 10 are children, one in three are women. And let's be realistic about who these people are. The homeless population is going up at the same time that rents are going up. There was also a recent study saying that for every, for every 5% increase in rents, there are 2,000 additional homeless people in LA County, and losses statistics bear that out. Of the people who are out there experiencing homelessness, only 30% have mental health, have serious mental illnesses. Less than 30% have a substance abuse disorder. Of those people, you know, where did they come from? More than 70% were last housed in LA County. And of those people, more than 70% were last housed in LA County for 20 years or more. These are our neighbors, these are our children, these are poor people. It's a crisis, absolutely Culver City can't do it alone, but it must not shrink its responsibilities. We, this city passed Measure H, every single precinct over 80%, we need to tax ourselves a quarter cent to try to help our brothers and sisters on the street. We need to do our part in spending that money wisely. We have the opportunity. LA City passed a bond measure to build homes for 10,000 people, which is something, but of Measure H, there's only $10 million for capital improvements like that. So Culver City needs to be creative. We lost approximately 50, depending on what you ask, $40 or $50 million from redevelopment money that should have been spent on affordable housing. It went to the state when they wound up redevelopment. We're now getting repaid that at a time when construction costs more. Time is up, I have lots to say about homelessness, but we just need to do our part.
Before we go on, I want to give each of you a minute to respond. It's been said frequently that the third rail of local politics is rent control. So I'd like you each to take just a moment, we'll start with, and certainly it's optional, you do not have to answer this question, tell us your position as to whether rent control ought to be a policy that Culver City should be addressing actively. Let's start with you, Mr. Lee.
Rent control is like a political grenade, to put it lightly, but I think what is not as controversial is thinking of people who've lived in Culver City in particular for 10, 20, 30 years, maybe they went to school here, they went to, you know, Faragut, they went to the middle school, they went to the high school, then they worked here for 20 years, and then suddenly they can't afford their rent, and they can't afford it by 100 to 200%. I think most people would agree that that is a horrible situation. I think the political stickiness of rent control itself needs to change. I've been talking more about a renter's bill of rights. I think if, I think if someone's rent is going to be raised by 200 to 300%, they should have more than 60 days to decide whether or not they're going to stay. I think in most cities in Southern California where there is rent control, it's allowed to be increased anywhere from 3 to 10% per year, which is fairly reasonable. I think there are ways that that can be tied by the cost of living index, but I think we need to stop talking about rent control completely, and talk about fairness, talk about keeping our elderly in their homes, and having a place for our sons and our daughters to live when they actually want to stay close to their parents. I think those are things that people can relate to. I think the phrase rent control is divisive, and it's kept us from doing anything in terms of substantive policy around affordable housing for far too long.
Mr. Vera.
Yeah, rent control, it's, I think no matter how you approach it, it's a bad word. Inherently, I don't think that rent control works. I think it provides a disincentive for landlords really to maintain and keep their properties up. I do however believe that we really need equal protection for both the renter, the tenant, and the landowner. Well, means a major, some major needs to be done to the property, that cost needs to be passed down to the tenant, but in increments. I think we should allow the landlord-tenant mediation board maybe some stronger outreach in terms of working with tenants and the landlord, to create something that's fair for both sides. Definitely aging in place, I was talking to Tevis, and working, working with the city to create programs where our seniors can stay, and maybe the county, or we can get funds where they can stay in their housing. There's nothing worse than really the aging having to go to assisted living facilities or whatnot, but I really believe that it's something that the city can work with, with all landlords and tenants.
Mr. Fish.
I think Marcus is going to be the only one to get a chance to say flat out, no. Thank you, Mr. Fish. There is some, yeah, there's some language issues here, because when people say rent control, they've got something very specific in mind, and all it's really, we've always really seen are the policies of New York after World War II, which was, which were very rigid, and San Francisco, Santa Monica, West Hollywood, Los Angeles, Berkeley from the 70s, which have, which ended up creating a new class of people resistant to change in their neighborhoods. So when you have every single person in your city unwilling to discuss an equitable distribution of new neighbors, you end up with 57,000 homeless people. So we have to find a way to talk about the key issues. We have to find a way to talk, to, you know, we have to be able to speak with a straight face to the eight-year-old woman who's door knocked down and sat down, who is back at work and spending more than 50% of her income in keeping her home. We have to find a way to provide that stability for the most vulnerable, who are the people who are seeing, you know, massive, massive increases, but we also need to take, we also need to take advantage of the new empirical work that's out there. There's a new paper from Stanford economists, as UC Berkeley grad, I don't normally talk on Stanford, but it's an amazing paper. They tracked every single renter in San Francisco for over a period of decades, and they have some really interesting things to say about rent control there, actual data instead of the scare. So we need to take advantage of this stuff. We need to prevent degradation of rental units, we need to encourage people to take lead out of their spaces and protect, install air filtration near freeways, we need to prevent, we need to find a system where landlords are not incentivized to convert rental units into condos, which is one of the things that happens in San Francisco. We need to find a way to, I'm out of time to get housing.
Mr. Diggs, surprise.
Thanks, Alex, you are right. In relation to what I'm going to say, for most of you that know me, I do have some, I have trouble with rent control. I do not believe rent control is a mechanism to get, to stabilize our housing market. What it is a mechanism of, it's to force property owners to have an artificial plateau as far as what their rents are. I don't believe in this. Now, do we have problems? Yeah, we have problems. There's problems throughout the state as far as affordable housing. That's why I think the state in 2000, this year, in 2018, there's approximately five or six laws that are on the books as far as creating more affordable housing. Our landlord mediation board, I hear nothing but good things about it, but it needs a little bit more meat. Sometimes the issue is not necessarily the rent, it could be a common area. Sometimes the issue could be that neighbor that's doing things that neighbor shouldn't do, making noise, et cetera. As far as the senior person cannot afford where he is living, I'm compassionate to that, and I'm open to ideas, but we have to balance it with the stakeholders. We have to talk to the landlords, we need to talk to the property owners, talk to the tenants, get them together, and let's, maybe we can come up with something that's not rent control, but it alleviates some of the problems. The reality is, at some point, someone's not going to be able to afford to live here. At some point, someone's not going to be able to afford to live in Lancaster. That's reality. But we, as a compassionate city, we can find ways to hopefully help those people.
Thank you. Well, let's, let's stay in the same lane but change gears a little bit here, and let's talk a little bit about the D-word, and I'm talking about development. And starting with you, Mr. Lee, could you identify for us what you believe the greatest challenges in Culver City are in the question development? Obviously, it's a city that's been burgeoning, it's been changing, the financial demographics of Culver City from 20 years ago to 10 years ago to today have changed tremendously. What do you see as being the main challenges for development here in Culver City? Mr. Lee.
I think the major challenge for development in Culver City is actually getting everything on the same timeline. I spoke about this, I think at a BPAC meeting fairly recently. There are a number of things that have been in the development timeline in Culver City for a decade or more. Unfortunately, a number of the projects that have been in the pipeline for a decade, some who've been in the pipeline for a year or two, some for five, some for seven years, are actually all being built at the same time, more or less, and most of those projects are in downtown Culver City. I think the city, it would be good, it, the central issue is, it's hard to pinpoint an exact timeline when a development is going to be done. I think it would be better if we did have an established development timeline, so we knew which projects were in the pipe for a certain area, their projected time to start construction, their projected time to end, but also include the projects that are outside of the boundaries of Culver City that might also affect the traffic, health, and safety of the people within Culver City, the stakeholders, and the people in Los Angeles City. For instance, on both of the poles of our city, we have a whole lot of development going on, for instance, on La Cienega Boulevard, that will highly affect the development going on in downtown Culver City, and in the Arts District. Similarly, we have development going on in Playa del Rey, which will affect the proposed development in Fox Hills on Green Valley Circle. We need to look at all of these things cohesively, so we know specifically how they will affect the traffic within our city, and how many angry calls and emails city council members get as there is.
Thank you. Let's go to you, Mr. Vera.
I need to keep the development in balance. We really need to provide a good balance between economic development and the needs and wants of our community. I think with the general plan coming up now, it's a great opportunity where we, as a city, step in and say, "This is where we want density, and this is where we don't want density," and really push developer to provide community benefits, whether it be open spaces, park spaces, greenery, whatever it might be. And instead of them just coming in and creating a project that maxes out their money and move out, we need to provide the development that would support our police, fire, and all our general services. Let's face it, without development, the city would go downhill. We really need to be proactive in terms of development, but be smart about it. Thank you.
Let's go to you, Mr. Diggs.
I usually take Alex's thing. All right, I'm smiling because I'm happy to be here. And listen, I've lived in this city for about over 20 years, and this is the first time I know that we've had about four tower drains erected at one time. So there is a boatload of development going on. The development that we have going on is going to assist in funding our general plan, or, excuse me, our general fund, rather. That general fund, about 40% of that is for public safety. So that's that quality of life thing that I was talking about, that pyramid here. An issue that I've, a pet peeve that I've had, and I still have, maybe from my planning commission days, is that whenever there's a development, if you ever notice, it always seems like there's no negative impact on police and fire. They always got it. At some point, we need to relook at that and convince the respective chiefs that maybe that project that's going to have X hundred of doors, maybe that's going to impact your response to it. And who's going to pay for that? The developer needs to pay for that. We need to leverage these developers, because at some point, folks, the projects are going to be completed. There's not going to be other major projects that we can leverage to get some significant community benefits. I'm not talking about a mitigation measure of restriping a lane, I'm not talking about extending a turnout pocket, I'm talking something that we, that really will help us, the residents. So I say on the development, it's helping us, we need to keep our, the neighborhoods engaged, we need to hear from the neighbors, the neighborhoods, as far as how a particular development is impacting them, because someone who lives in Fox Hills, I don't live there, so I don't know how it's impacted. Thank you.
Mr. Fish, I wanted my minute to finish rent control, but just really quickly, the reason we need to have that conversation is that we're going to get legislation at the ballot box if we don't. We have to be candid and honest, because right now, people are trying to repeal Costa Hawkins, and if we don't address that, then it'll boil over and we'll see something that's not thoughtful policy, but actually rage. Turning to the D-word, construction management is a very big deal right now. If you spend any time on the east end of Culver City or downtown, it's a disaster on traffic. People are having a hard time getting around because the city's not enforcing the agreements that it worked out with developers. That's a very easy, easily fixed thing. I assume every, one of these guys would, you know, also say that we should deal with that. I think we're fortunate, the four of us, to be running when there's a general plan process coming up. This is a once in two generations thing. I was talking to a planning friend, and she said, "Nobody does this anymore." This is, which is a good thing. We have the resources, we have the right-sized city, where we can come together and really reimagine, not just building with blocks and sort of charrettes and that sort of thing, but talking fundamentally about what is, what are the things that we love about our city? Is, you know, is the people, do we keep the diversity and the inclusivity? Because that's the only way we're going to do it, is through the general plan process and recognizing that a strong city is never finished. There's no capstone to any one of our neighborhoods. If we freeze anything in time, we're, you're just going to awfully, you're not resilient. The general plan process will also offer an opportunity to talk about parking, which I think every neighborhood and every interest group is concerned about right now, and there's no easy answer, it's a balancing of competing interests. We also will have the opportunity to talk about equity among neighborhoods, because some neighborhoods right now are awash in public and private investment, and it's discombobulating, but it's also presenting wonderful opportunities. I can walk to the train station to go to work, I can walk to Co-opportunity to pick up local bread, it's a really wonderful thing. Every neighborhood, every neighborhood should have some aspects of that, the convenience of being able to go get a single yogurt from the end of the street, for example. While other neighborhoods are, want new amenities or are struggling with such 790-unit projects.
I want to thank Mr. Fish for segueing to where I was going to go on the one-minute response, and we're going to start with you, Mr. Vera. You know, given that the city is now going through its opportunity to amend its general plan and change it, what do you believe the single most important element of that, of that general plan is and why? One minute, please.
I think the single most important thing is outreach. We need to get community involvement, we need to really look at every aspect of the city, every portion of the city, and really decide in terms of development, what, what development fits the fabric of that neighborhood and what doesn't. Be smart about the development that we place there. Through the general plan, we can create a map of how the city is run, where we want to hurt certain things, and where we feel inherently they don't belong.
It really boils down to empowering the neighborhoods. Some neighborhood associations are very strong, others are not. With the general plan update, we need to encourage, we need to motivate neighborhoods to be active, because this is not, this is a fantastic period of time. There are some elements in this general plan that have not been updated in almost 30 years. This is going to be our opportunity to say where we want our city to be for our descendants 30 years from now. We love our city right now. It didn't happen overnight. It happened from the wisdom of prior elected 20-plus years ago. So this is going to be our opportunity, but it is a group that, that needs to be dealt with by each neighborhood. We need input from everyone.
Mr. Diggs.
It's a good thing I didn't go first, because I would have taken it literally in terms of what element, which is a term for different sections of the general plan, I was a biblical Long Beach nerd, but...
I do need you to take me literally.
Okay. Housing and transportation are intimately linked, that's the discussion that's going to be happening, and that's the exciting part of this discussion, is that not just outreach and not just neighborhood empowerment, I totally agree with those, but also the conversation with experts, advocates, people who are unable to live here, people who want to live here, people who've lived here a long time and are really concerned about the big changes in where we're going, people who don't feel like the city's their own. But I'm still not going to answer your question, because I think it's housing and transportation that really is, they're intimately linked, you can't separate them.
Mr. Lee.
I think all of the things that the other panelists mentioned are worthy. I think definitely involving as many people as, in as many parts of the city as possible will help Culver City moving forward, no matter what issues come up, because we will feel like we're a cohesive community. My personal answer to this question, though I do think housing and transportation are vitally important, is the sustainability component of the general plan. I think it's very important to know whether or not the sustainability component will be something that's working to every aspect of the plan, or if we will have a separate sustainability plan. This is important in the particular context of making Culver City climate resilient. We've seen very, very, very many years of drought, we've also seen very strong El Niños in the last 10 years as well. There are a lot of unpredictable things that are going to come up, so we need to have building codes that allow us to easily recycle water, recycle food, and many different other things in addition to updating our grid. Thank you.
So it would not be an election in the city, the county, or any... So it would not be an election in the city, the county, or any area of the Los Angeles area unless we talked about something that's always very difficult for everyone, parking and traffic. So, Mr. Vera, obviously, there's a lot of things going on in this community in terms of development. There's a lot of pressures. There's a lot of pressure from the outside and the inside. Tell us, one of the ways in which you, as a city council member, this is your full turn of the answer, would address the issues of parking and transportation in Culver City?
If I had the answer to that question, I think we could solve out the problem of the city. It's huge, but I think it's a regional problem. 3 million cars per day pass through Culver City, from the last statistics I got from the police department. Those are just cars passing through the city from getting from point A to point B, let alone the traffic that our city generates itself. I would love to see a more robust bus system, either a dedicated bus line or a flex lane. We can move larger groups of people from point A to point B, something where it's more reliable. I think the more reliable it is, the more people are going to start using it. I personally don't believe that the bike lanes on major intersection or major thoroughfares, it's the right way to go about things. One, it's not healthy in terms of breathing in the particles from the exhaust. We can move it maybe on side streets. Or we can open up Bayona Creek, open up other access points, create a safer environment on the creek. We can put solar lighting, we can put call boxes for emergency purposes in terms of notifying the police, have the police come by and close the gates during certain hours of the neighborhood, make it feel safer for those neighbors saying, well, you know, it provides a different element in our neighborhood in terms of access to the creek that we don't want. But I think the bus lane and something where we can really depend on moving those people. I'm talking to Art Maeder from the bus department. He agrees that a robust bus system would be the answer in terms of creating a lot of mobility issues.
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
I think a part of the answer here is to enable those little local trips that I referred to earlier. Every time you have to go to the store to pick up some sundry item, you're clogging up the road. You're my traffic. I'm your traffic every time I get in my car. So the more that we can knock out those types of little trips, which are a stunningly large number of trips, if you don't think about it, but it's surprising how many trips in the Los Angeles basin are under a couple miles by car. If we can provide more opportunities for people to take care of their daily needs in their neighborhood, is part of the grand revision within the general plan. It's also a part of sort of my concept of incremental development. Instead of the $100 million project or the $200 million project, and then the next thing down is to remodel your garage, we need to enable small-time people to do things in their own neighborhoods. And what that looks like is much longer conversation. We also need to look at creating local lanes, not just bike lanes, but lanes for seniors on mobility scooters, lanes for different types of transportation that are coming out. I was on bike path the other day with my kids, and so he came rolling by on some single-wheeled thing. You know, maybe that's the future, I don't know. But there are things coming out right now where we should stop conceiving of these things as bike lanes, and we should conceive of them as places in the street for safe local trips. Whether you're on a bike, whether you're a Lycra guy, middle-aged man in Lycra, like me, mammal, or you're just trying to get to Trader Joe's in your neighborhood, we need to make those trips possible without a car. That will do a lot. Parking is, we just need to have a citywide discussion. The general plan will certainly be a parking situation element, and I've heard legitimate complaints from just everybody on parking. It really is just a collective effort of staying together and trying to see perspectives and come to a balance. Maybe some of the chute techniques, I don't know if people prefer to chute, but he recognizes that the issue is that when you supply something for free, people use it indiscriminately.
Thank you, Agent. And the same goes for Tom. All right. It's going to be Mr. Titts.
Probably a couple months ago, I had an argument with, a nice argument with one of the partners at my law firm. And I said, part of the problem with traffic is you've got all these Uber and Lyft drivers just driving all over the place looking for their fare. I think that's part of it. He said, no, it's not. But let's look at the first mile, last mile. If I live in Fox Hills, how am I going to get to the metro station? Probably going to get in my car and drive a little bit. If we had microtransit to help people in Fox Hills or help people in East Washington, West Washington, that would help out a great deal. As a planning commissioner, I've seen so many traffic studies. It's crazy. It's just crazy. But at the end of the day, the traffic consultant says, we need to restripe, we need to increase the length of a pocket, we need to add a pocket lane. That's what they say. I'm saying right now, let's think outside the box. We're in the 21st century. Uber movement, what's that about? Uber movement is real-time data that Uber is doing with other cities, Washington DC, a few other cities that slip my mind. We need to get real-time data. In addition to that, let's look at the low-tech. Traffic control officer, maybe in that intersection, it's all blocked up because that truck won't move. Maybe that traffic control officer can move things along. Is that going to solve it? No, but it's going to help move things along. And you, as a driver, you're going to feel a little better if things are moving along. Last but not least, again, on these projects, on these developers, we need to leverage them. This is the opportunity to get some of those measures done. Create, you know, add money to the mobility fund, but where's that coming from? From projects and developers. We have to be resolved.
Mr. Lee.
So traffic and parking are long-term problems, which will take a very long time to solve, if that's even possible. But I think one of the things that we need to do when we talk about both traffic and parking in Culver City is, one, to look at our overall philosophy, but two, also look at places in a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. Our overall philosophy for quite some time has been similar to what a number of people have already said. How do we get the cars through as fast as possible? A lot of modern cities, and Long Beach is a prime example, I was actually speaking with the current mayor of Long Beach Monday night. But a lot of cities are more focused on building up their pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure so more people are likely to get out of their cars and walk, but also making it so cutting through Culver City might not be the best route in the world. And I know there are a lot of people who are like, well, if we slow down traffic for through traffic, then it slows down for us. Well, I'm saying, I want you to get out of your car because you live in Culver City. And I think if we really focus on building that bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and connecting the infrastructure that already exists, one, we can get some people out of their car, and we can make long-term trends towards more walking, more mobility. On the other hand, one of the things that we need to do is to look at things on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. When we look at development, for instance, if we are developing near large transit centers or near the Culver City metro station, then maybe we don't need as many parking spaces as we would because there is regular transit right there. There's the Santa Monica bus, the Culver City bus, and the metro line. But if we're in Fox Hills that has a dearth of transportation infrastructure when it comes to walking or biking, we should rethink what we're saying about parking so we don't paint the entire city with one brush.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Many people refer to Culver City as, and any city, as a business or enterprise. As I understand it, the budget this year for Culver City is about $120 million. Makes it a fairly large enterprise as businesses go. Starting with you, Mr. Fish, can you tell us what in your background, your experience, has prepared you to be a decision-maker integral to this $120 million business or enterprise?
I have represented municipalities as a lawyer. Municipalities are in financial trouble, so I learned to read a caper in my 20s. I've argued with city managers about their budgets, so, you know, that's would not be a new experience for me. I've been fascinated by cities since college. I had an independent studies major kind of thing in Berkeley, the combined poli sci and econ, and I got to focus on something, and I chose cities, both the sort of cultural and the intangible qualities of cities that make them so amazing, and the technical details. That's where I got my planning bug. So I have actually represented cities. I've had to make hard decisions with city managers and financial professionals and city attorneys. So, you know, the first budget is not going to be a particularly steep learning curve for me. I've reviewed the city's budget for the past four years. Once I left private practice, once I could afford a home in Culver City enough to actually leave private practice and come work for the state attorney general's office, I started looking at the city's budget, so I'm a realtor with it. So I will hit the ground running. It will not be a particularly steep learning curve for me. Thank you.
Mr. Titts.
I've been a bankruptcy lawyer for about 20, 28 years. I haven't represented any cities, but I've represented a fair share of creditors for cities. Budgets are not new to me. In my Chapter 11 practice, I have to deal with budgets, I have to deal with creditors complaining about different things. The budget that we have, the 120 actually, is the general fund. The actual budget of the city is about 220 when you look at, 220 million when you look at the enterprise fund. So if I'm elected, a budget is not going to be something new for me to look at. I'm not going to call myself an expert, expert, that's why we have city staff that are the experts, but this is not foreign territory to me.
Mr. Lee.
So when I moved to the Los Angeles area, the first place that I touched down was USC, where I completed my undergrad, went to graduate school at UCLA. My major job while I was at USC is that I was the executive director of a student-run coffee house and performance space called Ground Zero Coffee House. It was completely student-run business. We had a yearly budget. We had a sound department, we had a performance department, and then we had a coffee bar department. And I was managing this at the age of 19 because I graduated early. That was a formative experience, and one of the things that stuck with me about it is, once we started turning a profit, which was the year that I was the executive director, USC actually took the business back from us. And it was no longer student-run. Currently, I'm on the board of directors for a national nonprofit called Move to Amend. We're working to amend the constitution. One of my primary functions there is to advise on our yearly budget. I'm also on the board of directors for another national nonprofit, The Backbone Campaign. One of my primary functions there as a member of the board of directors is to advise on budget. My current job at the nonprofit that has been in existence for, I guess, about 10 months with Reverend James Lawson, I am the project manager by title. By actual experience, I'm the guy that does everything, so I am basically in charge of our budget there. We are only about 10 months into existence, but our current budget is about $450,000, and we do events across the country. As a member of the Move to Amend board of directors, I have had to interact with both state representatives and federal representatives and local representatives in terms of policy and budget. I'm not intimidated.
Mr. Vera.
Budget, I love budget. As a business owner, it's all about budgeting to me. Since my parents' death in 2010, I took over the store. In doing so, I've expanded the store in terms of merchandising-wise. I increased the budget, but I know what it's like to sign the front of the paycheck, not just the back of the paycheck. Know what it's like having to pay employees and meeting that budget. In addition to the store, I have ranches up in Northern California where I have in excess of 700 acres of olive. So I know what it's like in terms of budgeting and how you really got to tighten the belt when it comes time to and making it all work. It's all about the numbers and how you spend it and where you spend it. You can't spend money unwise. We have to really be cautious, at least I do in my business, cautious about how I spend money, where I spend money, when I spend money. So yeah, to me, it's all about budgeting. Thank God that the store is doing well, the ranches are doing well, so I believe I really have an expertise in budgeting.
Taking the one that Josh brings to you, when we talked about budgets and enterprise, can you identify for me, and we'll start with you, Mr. Lee, can you identify for us, what is the single largest fiscal challenge facing Culver City over the next four years?
I think the largest fiscal challenge is how, it goes back to what we were talking about earlier. How do we balance development and the funds that development brings into the city with maintaining the character and the community of the city? Because I think of a number of us who've lived here for quite some time, and as I said, I've only lived here for 15 years, but in that time, I've seen dramatic change. And some of the change I've liked quite a bit. When I first moved here, there was a movie theater downtown and not with us. Now, it's a place where I would take my family or, you know, friends out and show them around. I think a lot of the development that's happened in the last 15 years has been incredibly positive, but I think it's at a tipping point where a lot of residents are frankly afraid of overdevelopment as much as they have appreciated the benefits that have come from the development that has been here in the last decade. So I think finding the right balance is the largest challenge.
So the largest fiscal challenge facing the city, Mr. Vera?
To me, it's our retirement system. I think if we allow measure-wide sunsets, the city would be really in dire straits. We need development, we need a lot of development and smart development in order to pay for the services that we've all really been accustomed to. But to me, the measure-wide sunsetting is probably one of the largest challenges we face, and if so, what we're going to do from there. And that's with our retirement system.
Mr. Titts.
There are two. Calpers underfunding, there's no doubt. That's the biggest challenge we have. It's not glamorous, but it's real. The only fortunate thing is other cities are dealing with the same thing. How do we resolve it? We're going to need to start socking away some money so when the time comes, we're not in that thing of, oh, boy, what happened? Now we're slicing all these services. In addition to that, it's the adequate funding for our responsibility under the Clean Water Act as far as stormwater. These are challenges, and if I'm elected, I'm going to keep those in mind in the decisions that I make. It's always nice to make decisions when we have a whole bunch of money, but at some point, we need to step back and say, what about that rainy day? That would be my responsibility if I'm elected, to think about that rainy day in decisions that are made.
Mr. Fish.
I agree that our pension obligations and the Clean Water Act obligations are the two obvious things that are expanding faster than anything else. And, I mean, in terms of socking away money for a rainy day, one of the things I love about Jeff Mira is, like any good accountant, he's very pessimistic, and we're supposed to enter structural deficit this coming fiscal year. I think we're going to be better than that, I hope, but we'll see very soon. I think with the Clean Water Act, the answer there, we have an emergency, I'm sorry, an enhanced watershed management plan for the Bayona Creek area, which is about $100 million, they estimate, of capital obligations. We passed Measure CY last year to raise $2 million to help fund that. I think the philosophy there was that if we're doing something, we're less likely to be the target of enforcement action by EPA, which I think was very wise. As someone who works in environmental enforcement now, you're looking for the people flouting the law, and you're looking for the affluent cities that are flouting the law. So we've at least taken a step, we can take more steps to be innovative in complying with the Clean Water Act. And with the pensions, we just, I think we need a participatory budgeting process where the whole community can begin to understand the budget better.
Well, I know it's been relatively painless. We've almost reached the end of this evening at Telson Park. This is the time where each of our candidates will give you their best closing argument as to why you ought to give them your vote. So we'll go in reverse order, and we'll start with you, Mr. Fish.
How much time?
They have two minutes each. We'll run over just a couple of moments. Please, Mr. Fish.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much for coming tonight. It's, one of the great things about Culver City is that people are so engaged, and we have this opportunity. You got these people who, none of us have any reason to do this, there's no pay, it's really, you know, a service. It's $5,800, I mean, hey...
He didn't tell you he's a very good straight man.
Thank you. It really is special to see this many people out. I'm running because I feel like this is the moment. My experience, which I didn't even get to a bunch of the things I've done, you don't go great at age forty-two not working. I've done a lot of things that are really relevant to the point that we're at right now, both with, with the housing crisis, with homelessness, with budget challenges, with environmental challenges, with transportation challenges. I wanna go out there, I wanna ask hard questions, and I wanna have deep discussions, and I wanna get people engaged, and I wanna find a way to get more of the city more engaged than ever so that we can meet these challenges. And we're never gonna find that capstone, we're gonna keep changing for another thousand years, and we're gonna become a stronger and better city with all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Vera.
Once again, thank everyone for coming out this evening, and I know there's plenty other, better things you'd like to be doing than sitting here, but we, we all really appreciate it. I'm running because I'm really passionate about the city. I, I hope through this dialogue this evening, you learned a little bit more about me and I learned a little bit more about, about all of you and your needs and wants for, for the city. With me, I'm fully accessible. I'm, I'm at the store almost every day, so if, if somebody has an issue with, with the part of the neighborhood, I invite them to come down and, and speak with me, should I be elected. But the city has, like I said, has given me everything, the, the support and the kindness and the love that the city has shown me, I, I feel this is my way of giving back. We might not agree on everything, but, but trust and believe that I will do my best for the city all the time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lee.
I gotta start out by admitting that I am running in 2018 partially because I ran in 2016. I just wanna get that out of the way. But I, I, I will say, I do bring a different set of skills that we don't normally see on a city council, and I think having a diversity of skills, as I mentioned, is very important. And I think having a diversity of representation is important as well. I thought we would make it the entire evening without somebody bringing this up, but I'm gonna bring it up. Part of my motivation for running is also what's happening in DC right now. Whatever your political persuasion is, you have to admit that what we're seeing in DC right now is different. And I think it's incumbent upon us with the difference that is happening in DC to be more community-oriented, to be more environmentally-oriented, to care more about equity, to care more about housing locally, because we know we have an ardent lack of empathy in DC. And I think that's incredibly important. I think it's more important for us, no matter who's elected, to do as much as they can to make their community a real community, because we lack that focus and we lack that passion in DC.
And finally, to you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you.
I'm running because I wanna make a difference. I've made a difference, I believe, as a planning commissioner, working on the Fiesta La Biona Committee, the Centennial Committee. Now I wanna make a difference for the whole community. Leadership is important, and it's, it's not just a word. And in my, on my literature, it says proven leadership. As a retired lieutenant colonel, I was responsible for the lives of hundreds of soldiers. I don't take that lightly. When I'm walking and talking to voters, it's not about me, it's really listening to the issues that you have. I'm not looking at this as any stepping stone to be a congressperson, to get appointed somewhere in DC, be the secretary general of the UN. I'm looking at it to be your representative in Culver City and to be a voice for you. Thank you.
Well, goodnight. Thank you all very much. I think we're all very, very fortunate for having such a great group of candidates here. I wanna thank you for your time, and Telford Park, and David, and Elizabeth, and our hosts, thank you very much. And I understand there's plenty of cookies and coffee still left. There is, please help yourself, and a big round of applause for our moderator, John Jones.
Just a quick note, I'm sorry for coughing through the whole, whole session. I also wanted to recognize my wife, Elizabeth, who put in yeoman effort to put all of this stuff together. She did all the details. I had the vision. She makes it happen. So, thank you. The panelists will be here for a while. Feel free to ask questions, eat up all the refreshments. I don't wanna take anything home.